A meeting right before this, so we will give everyone another couple of minutes and then we'll get started.
All right, Wayman, I think we're about ready to start. Do we have everyone we need for presenting?
Everyone for the presentation. Susan Schultz is on, I believe, and so is Jenny.
All right. Well, welcome everyone again. I hope everyone got a quick coffee break in between meetings, but welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners Work Session on Housing. It is Thursday, March 11th at 10:00 a.m. pursuant to MCL 15263A. We are meeting virtually today. If you do have public comment, you can email us at publiccomment@kentcountymi.gov, or you can raise your hand for that portion of the work session. With that, we will... Sorry, I got distracted with the chat. With that, we will start. We'll dig right into housing challenges facing Kent County, and I will turn it over to our presenters today.
Suzanne Schultz is here with us. You've heard from her previously, and this is a follow-up to the last work session on housing. And Suzanne will give a little background to bring everybody up to speed here on her first slide, so I'll just turn it over to Jan from Progressive. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. Good morning, everyone. I will share being with you. What we wanted to talk to you today about was kind of a framework for the future and how a lot of your discussions to date have kind of led us to, led us on a path to get to this point where we want to talk about what does a framework look like in your future discussions, and how do we want to talk about these issues and challenging, challenges facing Kent County in the future, kind of in an organized way so that you can be proactive rather than reactive in your thinking, and that we have some alignment with community stakeholders and a common vision moving forward that can really help make sound fiscal decisions and really help with planning and thinking about the future, which is in alignment with your mission statement. So as Jenny mentioned, there has been a lot of discussions that you've had. Welcome to the new board members. So this helps provide a little bit more context for you. But in June 2019, you adopted your strategic plan, and then with discussions with Matthew Van Zetten, there was agricultural preservation update that was provided in August of that year. And you started to hear the phrase, "Are we going to grow by choice or by chance?" And in that, it was on the heels of the agricultural study that showed agribusiness is an important component of the economy of Kent County, and how are we going to address agriculture as a county? And those discussions about PDR, Purchased Development Rights, and then even Transfer Development Rights, or TDR, which came to light. And there was a proposal that was sent out asking for services to help think about a TDR program. I responded to that proposal, and that kind of led me here to today. And but at the same time, you've also been talking about housing affordability. And those things may seem disparate, that we're talking about housing and we're talking about farmland, but really they're interwoven. As we're talking about what we grow and how we make land use decisions, it really comes down, if we're going to do a transfer development rights program, we're talking about farmland just as much as we're talking about development. And just a little bit background on what TDR is, just to give an example. If you have prime farmland that you're trying to preserve in Alpine Township, for example, and you want to recognize people's property rights and the value of that development potential on farmland, then you need someplace for that potential and value to go. And you can actually, under a framework of transfer development rights, take that value and potential and transfer it to another location within a community or in some models across the country, another community. So hypothetically, if you were to take Plainfield Avenue, we've been working with the township there, and I see Commissioner Green, that we want to see redevelopment along the Plainfield Quarter. We want to see revitalization and new development happen there to assist the tax base and see changes. Then could you take some of that development potential in Alpine, where you have the apple orchards, and then transfer that to Plainfield, where you want to see the development and you already have the infrastructure? So that's the concept behind TDR. And so that really necessitates us understanding both what happens in our agricultural economy as well as in our development community. And all those things are related to land use and how we grow and develop over the course of time. One of the challenges that we have is that there's not been an entity in the very recent past that is looking at how, from a countywide perspective, land use decisions are being made. Grand Valley Metro Council used to have a land use division. They no longer have that. West Michigan Strategic Alliance used to exist, and they were looking at more of a macro-level, regional perspective. They are no longer around. And you really do not have an entity that's looking at all of these land use decisions that are being made on an individual basis by community. So understanding that and saying, "Where do we head with TDR?" We talked to you in November, and I'm just going to recap that very briefly for the new members. But what we did is say, okay, if we've got, we're talking about development and land use and farmland protection and housing, how do all those things come together? And what's the county's role in that? So we conducted interviews with both external and internal stakeholders, looked at the strategic plan, identified potential future issues around growth and development, everything from recycling to sheriff service area to county drains, and started to connect those dots. You know, what are the affinity areas that we can put them into different buckets and have conversations about? And where are those opportunities within the community that we can collaborate? And then how do we want to think about what we do with that discussion? So the title of this today is Framework, and it is kind of this skeleton that is starting to take shape about what might that look like? And that's really the purpose for today, is to have that discussion with you and to really find out what your expectations are and what your thinking is around this. And really, what role does the county have as convener of this discussion? Because it's really, I think, an important role. And why it's so important is that we're ranked number one in growth in Michigan. We know that in the next five years, based on the Housing Next analysis that was done, they're anticipating 30,000 new residents in Kent County. But you also have finite land and water resources, right? You're not, we're not going to get bigger as our population grows. We have a certain size that we are, and it's not going to change. But as we see those growths and changes happening and land use modifications occur and community needs evolve, we need to think about how we're spending our assets. Because we want to be aware of that tax base and our tax rates and how we're spending our resources. We don't need duplication in services. We want to make sure that we're doing things efficiently and wisely and that we're really advocating and changing and supporting the local economy in a way that continues to make us strong. So the challenge, though, then, from a local control perspective, and that's something that we definitely want to respect and honor. But we also understand that, you know, our lives don't stop at jurisdictional boundaries. You know, where I go shopping or where I get my health care or my dog groomer, those are all in different communities. And so our lives are very fluid across jurisdictional boundaries. But the decisions that we're making related to transportation and land use and other things, water and sewer, are by jurisdiction. And so understanding those interrelationships and the systems that really drive this change and growth is really important, because then we can anticipate also the externalities, the secondary effects, intended or unintended, that we want to be aware of to avoid potential future issues. And we know that if we do this together with everyone in the room, that we can make good decisions. So even for Kent County, there's been a number of recent investments and discussions that you've had, even, you know, just last month, about, you know, the substation and fleet services and parks department offices. We have examples where there's townships in the county that are actually buying village or city assets, because the townships are growing and those smaller communities, the villages and cities, are not. We have the road commission that continues to have to meet demands, which is fine. They have a great partnership with local communities. But as we add more roads, that adds more infrastructure. Same thing with water and sewer. That's more infrastructure. And infrastructure is expensive, is not cheap. And then to maintain that infrastructure over time has a significant cost on a community. And then the local jurisdictions are also making their own just about what they're investing in and how they're growing. And just some examples of how Kent County, when we talk about growth and development, how these things all interface. So the map on the left is, and you can see kind of where the major drains, that the drain commissioner is responsible for. What's important about this, if we're talking about growth and development, is that you get more rooftops and asphalt and parking lots that happen and create more impervious surface. As that growth and development happens, it starts to burden the county drain system more as we're also seeing rises in precipitation and bigger rain events when they do happen. The 500-year rain that's supposed to happen once every, you know, 100 years or so is now happening once every 20 years or five years. It's dramatically changed. So what happens to our drain system and how we meet those infrastructure needs is an important consideration. So too are the services that we provide throughout the county. So the map on the right is the sheriff's service area. And as those communities, as you know, just from the north discussion, you have to make additional assets and investments in those communities to provide those services that people need. These two maps compare prime farmland and population change. And you can see where our prime farmland areas are. You have, it's kind of like the donut around the core six. And then those areas around the core six are also where you're experiencing the greatest population increases and where you have some of your highest prime farmland. So those things are interrelated, but being able to look at this in a bigger picture is really critical, especially for farmland, because jurisdiction by jurisdiction, making those decisions in a box without having the perspective of what does this mean on a countywide basis, really, you have no way to gauge where you're at or whether or not we're going to be able to preserve agribusiness, because it has to be at a scale that works to be able to provide the suppliers and feed stores and mechanics and all the other things that make farming work. You need to have those, and if you continue to chip away at it, and if you're not serious about it, we really have a choice about whether or not we're going to continue to preserve farmland in the county or we're not. And that's okay either way after those discussions happen. But there are economic development people in the county that say we're an urbanizing county and have pretty much written off ag. And so it's an intentional decision that we have to make, going back to that mantra of, "Are we going to grow by choice or by chance", to make those land use decisions together with the local jurisdictions. And so how do we leverage the conversation about farmland preservation that's happened in the past, the current conversation about housing affordability, the water resources that we have? Community action has been working on a comp plan. There's park decisions being made. You have services that you're making daily decisions on and how they're going to be provided to county residents. And again, down to the local jurisdictions, they're making those permitting decisions every day. So how do we leverage all of this and be able to put it into a framework that starts to make some sense? And so the premise in this is really that if we look at kind of the past and current conditions, we consider future scenarios, and there's technology out there today that allows us to actually map all of this, to do visual representations of it, to say, "What if we did this? What if we did that?" We can actually model all of that and quantify it, and it can even add a cost to it to be able to understand what actions and decisions we can make as a community, and I mean that broadly, across both local jurisdictions as well as county leadership, to nonprofits and philanthropy. How do we do that in a way that allows our community an opportunity to thrive and experience a high quality of life? How do we do that in a way that we can ensure positive outcomes for everyone and reduce disparities? How do we have this conversation about responsible stewardship together and the understanding systems-wide perspectives that are better to be made on a kind of a more macro scale than trying to do them one by one? And so thinking about that, listening to those themes that we heard from the stakeholder interviews, having, hearing the conversations the county board has had, we put this framework with five pillars, farmland and open space, land use, environment, infrastructure, and economy. And then drawing from your strategic plan, in the first column, you'll see themes around collaboration and partnership, diversity, equity, inclusion, fiscal responsibility, health and resilience, and quality of life. And those intersect each one of those pillars. And just to expand what the pillars are, it just provides, this provides a little bit more perspective on those various aspects of it. Everything from thinking about our changing demographics, which you heard in the Housing Next presentation, the number of one- and two-person households versus the number of family households really directs a change in housing. But that also means a change in how we look at zoning. For example, if I'm thinking of single-family homes, that's different for a single person than it might be for a family. And just having those conversations and how we deal with where we're going to put infrastructure, if there's PFAS contamination and we have to pay for it. How does that in the long term, I'm sorry, we have a settlement that'll pay for it initially, but to maintain that asset, you need a certain amount of people and households to do that. So the idea is then, if this is something that the county board's interested in, how do we convene a discussion with communities? Again, we know local control is super important. Not saying that we're trying to dictate anything. It's just facilitating a conversation. And what level of interest does the board have in leading this process? What would a discussion about our future opportunities, challenges, and priorities look like? And what would be useful information for you to talk with others about? So we just wanted to kind of do that recap. We had the presentation in November. We talked about somewhat about a process, but your input's really critical in talking about how does this take shape and what priority it should have for the board. And with that, I'll stop my screen share.
All right. So I'm sure we have a lot of questions, so let me pull that up and look in the chat. Sorry, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, this is fantastic discussion. And while some people may be rolling their eyes at the thought of PDRs and TDRs, and let's let the free market dictate, we have precedent when we allow the free market to dictate. And you don't have to go very far to see what a disaster that can be when you don't look into the future. You know, no matter what we do in the short term around Kent County, it's all great and wonderful, but unless we look out 50 years or 100 years, we're going to end up like every other community that has not gotten this right. And what you'll have eventually is urban decay, people moving out of the area to find the next little batch of greenland that they can move into. And what we need to do, I think, is follow the leaders and find out who has done this. And again, don't roll your eyes, but you know, I've been in Lancaster, Pennsylvania. One of the things that they do is they continue to grow. How do they do that with all the land they're preserving for farmland? Well, they create urban growth areas. And what that does is it allows them to grow in areas that makes the most sense from an infrastructure standpoint, okay? If we continue to dot the landscape with, especially the larger multifamily-type homes and developments, when there is no infrastructure out there and they start to, you know, we start to put in these septic systems all over the place. You know, eventually those systems are going to fail. It's just the nature of the beast. And anytime, I think we should set a precedent that any type of huge developments that we're looking to get outside the area of Grand Rapids, they still need to be connected with some sort of infrastructure. I think it's important that all these types of things hinge on the fact that there is infrastructure either in place or can be brought to that location without infringing on the prime farmland. So this discussion is really, really important if we're truly going to look out into the future. And what I would suggest is we look to the east and look and see how they did this. I mean, we don't have to, you know, redevelop the wheel here. We can look at what they've done. They've made some mistakes. They learned from them, but they've got the number one plan in the, probably in the entire world out Lancaster, and they're growing. Their cities are strong. Their schools are doing fantastic. The realtors are happy. The home builders are happy because they continue to grow. They're just doing it a way that makes the most sense. So I am all on board, and I would challenge anybody to think that if there's anybody more physically conservative than I am on our board, and why would I, you know, embrace this concept? Because I've been there. I've looked at it. I've studied it. I've compared, and it works. And to just toss this aside and say, "Let the market decide", that's a huge mistake and that would be a dereliction of duty. So I'm so thankful for this opportunity. I'm sorry it took so long, but this is really important.
Thanks, Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Legrand.
She's muted.
Thank you very much, first of all, to Suzanne for that really concise and helpful explanation, laying that all out. And thank you, Commissioner Antor, for your comments. I agree, we've got a lot to learn from people who have done this right. Those of us in the cities have a lot of responsibility to undo some of our zoning so that we can redensify. In Grand Rapids, we had a very tiny victory recently where now we can allow, in certain business districts, increase. We can have housing now on the first floor. There was an ordinance that said it had to be business. Well, now, it sounds dumb, but that's the kind of thing that's going to help us redensify. And we've got a whole slew of those that we've got to fix so that development in the city becomes more possible, more reasonable. But I also just want to, I just want to mention how grateful I am that we had that presentation on the agriculture of Kent County today. And just to be thinking about the investment of time in something like apples, that, you know, we've really got a plan. If we value that, you know, that's not something you can turn around in five years. That's, if you get rid of it, it's, you can get rid of it quickly, but you can't establish it quickly. So I really want to value that agriculture that we've got. I really believe strongly in preserving it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Legrand. Commissioner Pinestein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So thank you, Commissioner Antor and Legrand. I mean, well said, and I don't think I can dispute anything that is said in that. But, you know, I do want to thank Suzanne. Great presentation. Thank you for all your work. I also want to give props to the administration, Wayman and his staff, because it was a couple of years ago that I sat down and just had a frank talk that, you know, the problem in Kent County, you know, I mean, growth's going to be a problem everywhere. But for some reason, in Kent County, we felt that we needed to pit the farmer and those who support farmland against the free market, real estate developers. And somehow, they became enemies that came very toxic. And I've been a person that's been involved in those attacks on me personally, and every time I'm up for, you know, reelection. But there is a place, and I think Commissioner Legrand pointed it out, that, you know, there are solutions, and it's even within the cities that exist to change their zoning laws to increase density. I mean, that was one thing that the land bank worked hard on, is finding new ways to provide affordable housing, not in the suburbs, not in farmlands, but within the current cities that we represent. I mean, this task is going to be tall, but, you know, what I hope we get out of it is that agriculture and developers and real estate agents are not enemies. We can work together to provide a county that we can, you know, be happy about. You know, I don't want to be Oakland County where, you know, I believe there's a park with one farm left, so people can go visit it to see what a farm used to look like. And it's not just a Kent County issue that we need to attack. I mean, we've got adjoining counties that can help preserve the farmland to provide the products that our agribusinesses in Kent County need. So, you know, it's a tall task, but this is the, you know, first step. But, you know, I'm kind of skeptical too, because we've taken first steps before, and then it's become political and it just ends up badly. So, you know, my hope at the end of all of this is that, you know, the attacks on each other end, and we finally sit down and find a way that we can work together to solve some of these problems on both sides. You know, the affordable housing and a vibrant agricultural community that was highlighted this morning in our board meeting. So that's all I'm going to say. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner Pinestein. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I want to echo the previous sentiments. And, you know, to tack on another point for where I see how vital it is that we occupy this space is also lying in our role as the public health body. You know, we're dealing right now with a pandemic that was caused by another zoonotic mutation. A virus found in animals mutated and found its way into humans. And in the past, it's often been where pandemics have taken root. And I think, you know, as we've seen more and more, that as we've seen a rise in that kind of a virus, and that is believed to be in large part because more exurban development has encroached higher intense uses in areas where there is more wildlife and there are less intense uses. And, you know, certainly ag is a use of humans in and of itself. But I think in preserving ag, we're also helping preserve wildlife. We're helping preserve other natural resources and ensuring that we protect ourselves against something like this from happening again. And I think, again, it shows how the intentional work we do right now will have huge impacts on a variety of things. I was very appreciative to see, you know, the map involving county drains and our responsibility in maintaining our water systems and our drainage systems. And just felt that that was important to show that there's even more reason for county governments to get involved in this space beyond the fact that we live in regional markets that stretch beyond city or township boundaries. You know, if anything, on top of the TDR conversation, the PDR conversation, because we are talking about the idea of how we can convene a space for encouraging what I like to call gentle density, the idea of not just huge high-rises, but duplexes, fourplexes, granny flats or ADUs. Have we, is there any consideration of trying to create something similar to what MEDC has with redevelopment-ready community, a kind of a common concept and kind of a boilerplate language that our constituent communities can at least consider? You know, obviously, we're not, we don't write the zoning code. We shouldn't write the zoning code. We shouldn't tell them what they should put or not put. But as we know, many of these communities don't have the same degree of resources. They don't have the same degree of staff. Is there any place for us to provide kind of the boilerplate language that can help all of our constituent communities find a way to preserve our precious ag land, preserve our natural resources, while also meeting the needs of our housing supply?
That is one of the things, Commissioner, that we have talked about is perhaps creating a toolbox that would be available to our local units with ideas learned from other successful communities, like Commissioner Antor had mentioned, that the county and our resources could prepare that as a service to the local units, and then they could run with it to, in all their decision-making around the growth and development within their boundaries. And I think there's also opportunity to be talking across those boundaries, as Suzanne said. As Suzanne said, we, in our daily lives, don't live within the boundaries of a township or a city. We we move about and live our lives across boundaries. And maybe we as a county can facilitate more of the communication and collaboration and cooperation across the townships and other local units here in our community.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bokowski.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, and just as a programming note, I've kept my video off because I'm having internet issues and not using the bandwidth. So anyways, I I chose not during the full meeting to, you know, go down memory lane too much. But like Commissioner Antor, I picked up drops on the ridge back in the day. I started about 50 years ago. That's just how old I am. And it used to be out there on my great uncle's orchard and and do that kind of stuff. So I I do have a connection to the, just again, the the preciousness of of farmland and and what we do. That being said, a- as we look at this moving forward, I'm going to start beating the drum a little bit louder about mobility services slash public transportation. I think I noted it in our last work session that the the threshold of if you spend 30% of your income or more on housing, your housing stressed within your household. There was work done a decade ago of comparing or combining housing and transportation costs. And if those are combined more than 50%, you are stressed. And when we mapped Kent County, again, this was a decade ago, but when we mapped Kent County, there were areas that you could, you know, at average median income, and that's like $50,000 or $46,000 per household. There were places you could get under 50% for those combined costs or for the housing costs, excuse me. But when you combine transportation, affordable areas, and I'm using air quotes that you can't see, affordable areas like Cedar Springs become unaffordable because people cannot afford the mobility costs in the far farther reaches of our county. So we we have to get serious at looking at countywide mobility and how that impacts our work on farmland preservation, affordable housing, and and then even density within the more urbanized areas. Because density works best when it has excellent mobility that supports it. And last but not least, we do in all of this want to look at unintended consequences. While Commissioner Legrand was correct in pointing out the change in the zoning ordinance to allow ground floor residential, that actually has a very significant unintended consequence. You know, I can, I can show you plans of a proposed development in the city of Grand Rapids of 55 units. It has one ground floor unit, and this was before the zoning change. One ground floor unit, and because it has one ground floor unit, it is not required to have an elevator. So people with mobility impairments cannot be residents of the second and third floor of that building, nor visit anybody who may be a resident in that building. So ground floor residential could be good. I don't know if we can still require compliance with the Fair Housing Act and the Michigan Construction Code that, you know, requires, and I could digress, but I better stop right there. Difference between plant type A units, type B units and all that stuff. So so anyways, let's let's keep working to to make our values real. At the same time, really having those conversations about what what is our intention? What might happen as we make these changes?
Thanks, Commissioner Bokowski. Commissioner Green.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, you know, I'm kind of the new guy on the block here, one of the new kids on the block. So please forgive me for a kind of general question. I think this is for Suzanne or for staff. But, you know, we just learned a lot today, a lot more about the importance of, you know, our apple growing industry from the MSU extension. And obviously, we all recognize the value of agricultural industry in Kent County. I, you know, as a, as a someone who just a few months ago was sitting at the dais as a township official and now as a county official, I'm having a little bit of trouble wrapping my arms around some of this because it feels to me what we're talking about ultimately is zoning. And I guess I have some qualms about, you know, the county going in and dictating that kind of thing. So I'm wondering, you know, short of that, i- is would that be the only option? Or what are some of the other things that we can do here that the avenues that we could pursue? Because I think we have some of shared goals here, but I, that just gives me a lot of pause as someone who, you know, recently was making those decisions at the at the hyper local level.
Yeah, I mean, I can respond. The zoning is a local control thing, so the county is not looking, it wouldn't, wouldn't be dictating. And I think that the idea is that the county as convener, because you, the county sees so many other things. I mean, the the drains are a good example, service area for sheriff. You have to make decisions as the county anyway, right, about how you're going to provide service and facilities. Local jurisdictions are doing the same thing. And so you have the opportunity, I think, as the county to look on a bigger, that bigger scale and see what influences are going to have on agriculture or housing in a different way than local jurisdictions. Well, and the idea would be that the local jurisdictions are a partner in a planning effort that they're alongside you and you decide as a group how, you know, who has what power or how you're making decisions. But that is a conversation and it's really not dictating policy, but it's providing a framework that there's a common understanding and then a discussion about where do we want to head? What choices do we want to make for the future of the county? And on an individual basis, understanding how each cog fits together now within that framework to be able to determine whether or not it's important to preserve farmland or it's important to provide affordable housing. And then local communities will have to decide on their own what actions they're going to take. As Jenny mentioned, the county could provide a toolbox, could provide resources to be able to help. If if a community wants to change their master plan or wants to change their zoning ordinance to be able to align, and there's value created in the discussions where they see that they are part of a larger whole and that they do want to take proactive actions to to be able to do men zoning, they could do that, but the county can't make them do that. But being part of a conversation and having that discussion in the room then allows you to make choices as a local jurisdiction that you may not have had that perspective before. It may not have had that opportunity to really understand what decisions we make as a whole contribute to things like the agriculture. Because at at each community making their individual decisions, you don't get that perspective. And your decision making might have been different had you had that perspective. And so it's it's really as simple as providing options, laying it out and letting people choose which direction they think they need to go as a local jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I want to dive into a little memory lane. You know, they're very much like our CAA with PDR. There is a county history lesson here that might be beneficial for those who are new. I know when I joined on seven years ago, the first thing I did was get the original county PDR information. Wayman, do you have that?
I, it's it's not here with me, but I, we have it in 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 all of our documents. Yes.
Yeah, I I think that's important, particularly for those who are new, to get a sense of the county PDR program, why the county has the PDR program and read that whole document. There's a lot of information in there along with one piece as essentially, Chair of the Finance Committee, I need to bring up a component that's, that really impacts everything, which is funding. So we can look at these slides. We can talk about what we can do from a planning standpoint to be a toolbox. But I do think a big center of this, when it comes to PDR, TDR, is funding. And I've attended in my history of being a commissioner, a number of the agricultural board meetings. And one, one development that's happened over the years that has changed since we originally launched a PDR program is oil drilling. And I certainly would like to have that added as a bullet point and all of this information. And I mean, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding from attending meetings there is if a farmer chooses to have oil drilling, they cannot accept any federal grants to also do a PDR.
But you're right on that, yes.
Yes. So those types of things have impacted how this was viewed compared to when PDR was started. But getting back to funding, my comment there is PDR had a significant amount of county funding. And Wayman, I think it's important when you give that document to share what the county has spent on PDR from a historical standpoint. Also, the current funding bucket is foundations, states and federal grants. Is that accurate to say, Wayman?
That's correct. That's correct.
So I have compared this to the Kent County Parks Foundation numerous times. And I would love to see a leader in the community step up and model what the Parks Foundation has, someone who is very passionate about PDR, someone who can help lead that that similar organization for that, for an extra bucket of funding and add that to the mix. I I would be the first to attend. I'd be the first to write a check. I think there's quite a bit that can be done if that component can get added. I think the big key is having the local community, those who really are passionate about this topic, organize and make that component happen to this in order to really launch that area into a whole new level. Because I think one of the challenges with this is funding. So getting back to the statement I made at the board meeting, I've learned when it comes to these topics, transportation, land, water and talent. Thank you, Commissioner Bokowski, for bringing up the transportation part. But we can really spend quite a bit of time on those four topics with these areas as well on what we can do, what, you know, what we balance with the local units. As Commissioner Green said, this, a lot of this has to do with zoning, master plans. And I think one piece as far as a planning tool, maybe there is a meeting where we get a, our communities together and have this topic and and be a resource for folks, whether it's a PDR, whether it's a housing, to have one place to go for information on zoning and master plans. And that can help just be a resource for information on on that topic. So tho- those are my steps is I throw in ideas for next steps and and finding what we can do and where our role is.
So I want to be clear, though, this isn't a PDR discussion. So I appreciate that PDR is part of that, you know, that vision in terms of how land is used. But, you know, I, this isn't a PDR discussion. So I think kind of the things to to Diane's point that I that I that I kind of been batting around in my own head is, do we, I'm just going to throw this out there as an idea. Does the county come up with some sort of Kent County land use collaborative or or some sort of intentional group that we would invite maybe a person from each municipality that does planning and zoning to come and we just all share what projects are going on? We look at mapping all of those things that you talked about, Suzanne, like drains. What new sewer systems are going in? And maybe we could talk to communications companies about laying broadband at the same time. Maybe we look at road projects and 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 communities could work together on more of all of these infrastructure things and land use opportunities. So I guess I'm just going to throw that out there as an idea. But Suzanne, is that kind of what you're envisioning? And then also I'm wondering, does Grand Valley Metro Council or does anyone else do this?
So I'll answer the first question or the second part of the first, the question. The Metro Council looks at transportation. They take state funding from the feds, so the feds to the state, to the Metro Council and the state monies, they help allocate those out to the local jurisdictions for transportation. So they look from a long term perspective on transportation infrastructure and they do have a plan for that. They have mapped in the past zoning to, to, you know, as an exercise. They used to have a land use division, which they eliminated. And so some of those discussions used to happen at the Metro Council. There there, there's a number of reasons why they they no longer do that. But they they could be a convener as well, but I think the county, it makes more sense from the standpoint that it affects your services more than it does the Metro Council. Metro Council is only transportation. The range of services the county provides makes a lot of sense. And I think that as conveners, you are viewed as a neutral party. You're representing all of those communities and you can facilitate those discussions and hear what they have to say. So I think it's much more personal in some ways with the county doing that work. What we're suggesting is some sort of planning process that you're framing what the issues are and posing those issues out to the community in some way and however way you want to do that. But then we're facilitating a discussion about it, which will then lead to choices. So the the goal is not to dictate what can happen in the future, but to to lay it out there and say, let's talk about it. And how does it affect us? What does that mean to our future? How does that affect our financial stability? How does it affect equity? And to really try to understand those issues. And I do know there's been interest from the philanthropic community in this subject as well. Everybody wants a guide on how they're going to invest their money and make wise decisions and avoid rework and in political controversy and all of that. So it really fits everyone to be able to facilitate that.
So we have a couple more hands raised and and we do have people who haven't asked questions yet, so I am going to get to them first. Commissioner Steck.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Bolter. So as I, as I think about the the challenge you put out there and we started, that is the projection of 30,000, maybe more new residents coming into this county in the foreseeable future. That that obviously puts pressure in the question is where do we, where do we attract that growth? Where is it best situated? But it seems to me that we've heard a lot about another dynamic that's evolving in the post COVID world, and that is that the the more dense population areas such as the city of Grand Rapids tend to see a flight that is people are beginning to move out of the density, or at least there's a trend identified to do that. So that's, that would be another further pressure if in fact that carries forth on a longer term basis than just the the current pandemic context. And so it it just strikes me that ground zero for this battleground is in the, is in the donut suburbs. Because that is where the pressure is the greatest. That's where the opportunity is the greatest. That's where the the possibility of continuing to to accommodate growth without the kinds of confrontation with the PDR and the and the loss of farmland is is most open. So if we are convening, if we are going to engage in a conversation about how do we as a, how do we as a broader community identify the most attractive, most useful, most effective places to develop? It seems to me it's those communities. And and that would be the most logical place to start that conversation is rolling those communities and talking about how you do that. I I know from, you know, I represent the city of Walker, which is one of those communities. And and the 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 tough political conversations are preserving green spaces. So here you are in the suburbs, which would be the target for that, and yet. And yet um wh- what is the most difficult thing is, uh how do you, how do you address those green spaces? And, and that's a very broad concept. It's not just a park, uh it's any undeveloped land and, and communities want to save those. Um, they want those as much as possible. And so that's, those are mega trends that just make this incredibly difficult challenge to, to be able to convince communities as a whole that you, you need to develop these spaces to a maximum appropriate level. And what is the maximum? How much green space is appropriate? How much uh can we go ahead and do that? Because if you don't solve that, it just strikes me that it's just, it, it's a losing battle as you get further and further out. So. So I guess I'm, I, I represent one of those districts, but I would encourage as this conversation goes forward that we look for a way to, to really focus on getting those communities, the, the suburban communities that are around Grand Rapids to be fully involved. Um, because they have a unique challenge.
Commissioner Burl.
Yes, Commissioner Green, uh I thought uh had some good points as well. And, you know, we can talk all we want. We have to get buy-in from our, our local communities. We have to engage in conversation. Otherwise, we're just having these meetings to market off our list of things to do. So again, we have to engage these local communities and uh if, if we don't do that, we're not gonna go anywhere anyways. Um, you know, I agree, you know, I, I think green spaces are, it's an interesting issue. Um, never been a, a big P D R guy. But I'm gonna tell you that Lincoln Country Club in uh, in Walker uh is just as important uh for those folks that live in that community as a, a farm north of town. Uh, so again, we're putting a, a lot on the backs of uh the, the core cities. And uh we need, we need buy-in from them, uh or, or education, right? We need to educate each other. We need to know what these communities are doing. And again, I, I'm not sure how much further we can go until we uh get the buy-in from, from our locals.
Yep, I agree. All right, Commissioner Hennessey, you hit your hand up and then put it down um before I go to a second round. Did you need your, did you have a question or no?
Yeah, I really like what Suzanne just put up, the discussion points. And it really is like, where are we going to go from this? And how are we going to continue this discussion? What comes next? This, everything that's been raised has really been interesting, has been valuable. I, I came here forty years ago to Kent County from a community, a county that actually had a planning department. And, and it was not that it planned for other communities, but it was a, a platform for information, for a little bit of guidance to all the local communities. And, and then I've just never seen that here. I've, I've been told that the original county administrator, Dick Platy, actually started as a planner for Kent County. And somehow that whole idea, and here we are, six hundred and fifty thousand strong in terms of people. And, and we're, you know, really at a beginning point again, because other discussions, whether it's been with the Metro Council or the West Michigan Strategic Alliance, have saw, sort of fallen apart. And we are the convener, as Suzanne has said. We are the convener for the discussion here. And, and it, just where are we going to go next? How do we continue this effectively?
Right. Commissioner Antor.
The next slide up for us, the next step, just to. Thank you.
Can we continue with questions or?
Sure, sure. Go right ahead.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just real quickly, there was three different comments made today, one in the earlier meeting and two here that I just wanted to address really quick. Commissioner Steck, man, he talked about people fleeing, eventually fleeing Grand Rapids, which, which tends to have to take care of your urban core area. Um, one of the things that they do in Lancaster, Pennsylvania is they reinvest. Not all the P D R money goes out to preserve farmland. A lot of it's reallocated to reinvest in the city. Because if you're gonna tell people, we can't develop all, you know, willy-nilly all over the place, you better have some options for them. So it's the urban growth areas and the reinvestment in the cities. And if you've ever been to Lancaster, and look, try to find urban blight there. Uh, you can't. It's a, it's a extremely um, i- it's an area that people want to live in. Similar to Grand Rapids right now, the reason why we're seeing so much growth, because we haven't screwed this thing up yet, you know? Uh, it is a desirable place to come and that's why we're leading the nation in a lot of growth categories. So um, yeah, I just wanted to make that point. This, we gotta keep the core city um, you know, vital and, 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 and make sure that we reinvest in that. There was a couple of other things real quickly. Commissioner Green mentioned zoning, uh which is extremely important, obviously, to this discussion. You know, one of the things, hang on one second, I lost my train of thought. One of the things out in Pennsylvania that they do is they don't dictate um what the, the locals do. The local units, government retain all that. But what's happened over the years, the way it's evolved, is they bought into the, the program, the farmland preservation program. They see the benefits. They see the value now of what they created because it's become a place that people wanna move to. Land values are sky high. Houses don't stay on the market but a day. Um, and realtors, home builders are happy because they have areas to grow in, and it's just work for everybody. So that has actually been something that they didn't envision, but that's actually what happened. And one other thing, um Commissioner Morgan mentioned this morning, that current farming trends are, yes, absolutely, we've got a lot more efficient, uh especially with apple orchards. So I'm looking out my window right now at an orchard that used to have X amount of trees. We probably doubled or maybe even tripled the amount of trees we could put on that same footprint. The problem is, as efficient as that is, um, that's not a reason to ignore, um, you know, the pressure on growth. Because we have maxed out the efficiency on these apple orchards. We're never gonna be more efficient. We can't get any more trees on this land. And uh I don't believe Al Gore when he said you can grow fruits and vegetables inside buildings, no water and no sunlight. Uh, you know, that's, that's certainly wasn't true then. It's not true now. So we have maxed out the efficiency on these orchards. So I don't want to use that as an excuse not to look um at future planning because there's gonna be unbelievable pressure. And we just need to study this, look to the east if we have to and try to figure out the best move forward. Thank you.
All right, we're coming up on the end of our time. Um, I do have Commissioner Wooden and Bokowski wanted to go again. And then it looks like Suzanne, you'll run us through this last slide. So if our two commissioners can be brief, we can uh get you both in yet. Uh, Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair, and I will try my darndest. Um, you know, I, I see Commissioner Jones's uh comment in the chat about the land use collaborative. And I would agree with her that I think that topic is worth more discussion, especially since I think a large portion of this in a place where we can assist in our, in our goals without commanding and overstepping our jurisdiction is in how we help our constituent communities build codes, build processes for small-scale development, small-scale infill development. You know, in the end, in this, in this country, in this area, um, we have a regulatory pattern that works really well to build single-family homes and works really well to build four-story and above buildings. It's really difficult for infill development of uh, you know, a duplex, something with a, a, an attic apartment, a quadplex that takes a very similar amount of land and building envelope as a larger home, but can accommodate more families. And it, because it is in that middle space, it's a little harder to craft effective land use code for it. And that is where I think a collaborative could exist because there are best practices. There are now case studies that show how this could be done. And it may be a place where we can provide supports so that we can help, as Commissioner um Steck alluded to, that donut ring of the suburbs that are seeing uh increased demand and a need to balance the need for green space and the need to accommodate housing. Uh, and moreover, from a housing affordability standpoint, uh that, in my knowledge, is the only place where we'll see a direct relationship and new supply also being new, relatively more affordable supply. Because building a high-rise or mid-rise development, unless you have some kind of government or foundation support, is very difficult, if not damn near impo- pardon me, if not impossible to uh rent affordably or sell affordably. So I think if there is a convening space for us in trying to encourage into infill development is, is how we can help our constituent governments and our constituent planners figure out how they could accommodate that small-scale development in a way that's easy for, for everyone and meets the needs of every community. Thank you.
Um, we are at eleven o'clock. Commissioner Bokowski, can you be brief?
I'm just gonna say amen to the conversations uh for us to convene, community conversations. Amen.
Amen for your brevity. Um, thank you. Um, all right, Suzanne, do you want to run us through that, that last slide you had on next step?
Um, so the, so we wanted to, we shared the information with you. Um, there's multiple different ways that additional information can be shared. Obviously, this is a super complex um subject when we're talking about all those different buckets and, and what they mean and understanding those in a relationship. So uh we could bring, you know, that, one of the things we wanted was your feedback on um understanding of how do you want to receive that information? Um, and you know, is it by topic every other month? Is it every month? You know, is it um as one batch? Or how do we, how do we show that to you? Um, and then also discussing kind of, you know, a proposed process, which we could bring back to you about convening stakeholders uh and identifying partners in the working team and the relationship with county leadership. For example, if we had five different working groups for each one of the pillars, would you want to have county leadership kind of presiding over each one of those and helping to facilitate the discussion?
Um, I think, I think that'd be a little much. Um, that, that's a lot. Um, I think probably what we should do is maybe put together a proposal to Wayman and then probably have executive committee review it. I mean, I, I would think that that would probably be our best starting point. And then executive committee can get input from our board and then we can go from there. Uh, thoughts from commissioners on that? Any hands up? None? Commissioner LeGrand, was that a, was it a thumb up or a hand up?
That was a thumb up.
Okay. Bokowski?
Yeah, that's my hand up saying.
Steck?
I was gonna be even shorter than Dave and say yes.
Okay. Okay, so well, Suzanne, if that works for you, um, I, I think that's probably the best route is submit something to Wayman. We can kind of put together a, like a, a, uh, you know, a, a skeleton plan that could go to the executive committee to kind of like talk about and discuss. And then we can move forward. I, I definitely think, i- it sounds to me from our board and the input today and the interest that we all are interested in this. We wanna, we wanna continue to pursue it. It's gonna be how it, how it's structured. And we wanna, of course, and I've said this before, make sure that we're very respectful of all the local jurisdictions and their zoning uh abilities. So if we can kind of come to an agreement on, on where we go with that, I think the next steps would be our next executive committee meeting um where we could, we could um discuss this further if that works for everyone.
Sounds good.
All right, with that, we are at item three, public comment. Any public comment today?
Don't see any messages in the inbox and there are no hands raised in the chat.
All right, any miscellaneous? Commissioner Antor.
You knew I wasn't gonna get out of here without some miscellaneous. Just a, a quick thought. Um, since there is a model um that's worked really well on the east side of the country, maybe perhaps we could, moving forward, if we want to have some good dialogue on the subject, we could bring a couple of those officials over here and let them, instead of us trying to figure out what they did or what works, what doesn't work, have them come. And let's pick their brains and what worked, what didn't work, the obstacles and so on and so forth. I mean, it is the number one um preservation plan in the world. And uh they have come here before. They're willing to share their story. They love agriculture. They love what they're doing. So that's just my thought. Let's reach out to them potentially.
And, and, and I'm not opposed to that, but again, this is not a P D R plan. So I, I want to be very, very clear that, you know, I'm all about Suzanne going and getting best practices for sure. But I don't want to just be so micro-focused on P D R.
I agree with that, Chair. Um, but as a result of their work though, they have figured out land use um and infrastructure, all that. So we could keep P D R, just how do they, how do they continue to grow, I guess?
Yeah, best practices for sure.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Any other miscellaneous today? Don't see any hands raised. Commissioner Ponstain.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So the only thing I want to ask is, this is a complicated issue. And I have listened in to the executive meetings before and you allocate an hour for a numerous number of topics that seem to be rushed through. I mean, this is a complicated topic. So, I mean, I don't mind that the executive committee is looking at this. But you're gonna need to allocate more time than just an hour or two.
I think what, I think Stan, what I was envisioning was the executive committee would kind of look at the structure or the plan of, are we gonna do some sort of collaborative? Are we gonna do, not like what we're gonna do, but, but like the, 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 the uh, the vehicle to do it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, yes, yes, it does make sense. And I think the point's made is that, you know, I've been on this commission for over twelve years now. And this is a toxic issue that's been dividing the county for too long. And we've got to dig in and find a way that we all look forward to a direction that's gonna benefit all of Kent County and, and stop the practice of dividing us between farming, developers, real estate agents, free markets. I mean, that's gotta stop. And, and that's something that I've been yelling in the background for too long and I'm getting too old and just too tired to keep doing it. So that's, that's my point, is that we're gonna need more discussion on this.
Okay. And we can, we could potentially pull together another work session once we've, once we've looked at some options, if that would make everyone feel more comfortable. I'm, I'm open to whatever the board wants to do and I, I want everyone to feel comfortable. You're right, it's a lot of information. It's why I'm bringing it forward in these work sessions. I, I know it was a long morning for all of us, but it seems to be the easiest to schedule. Um, so Commissioner McLeod.
Um, thank you, um, Chair Bolter. I just had a quick thought. I missed the first part of the meeting because I had a different one, the ten, but so I apologize for that. But um I was able to look at the presentation and it looked like it was a, a lot of great, great information that was shared. The only thing that I would hope and um that I would like to suggest is if, if there is um, uh, you know, a group of people um within the county, including the commissioners, um that convene on this, is that we, um, that someone, um whether it's the, the new position that will be um part of the county's, you know, um, uh, direction towards um, you know, in relation to the statement on racism. Um, is to make sure that someone is involved in that committee that is looking at this from uh an inclusive, an inclusive um and uh structural sort of issue, sort of standpoint. Because a lot of the reason, coming from the, you know, city zoning committee, I can say that a lot of the um kind of issues around the fact that like Commissioner Wooden was talking about, where there's these, 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 these um local zoning rules that are, um, take care of the smaller um um residential homes and then the larger and, and forget about the middle. A lot of that is based in these laws and these zoning rules that were um really developed to, the, the, developed and promoted kind of that, that redlining that happened a long time ago. And so I think that someone has to be looked, someone has to be involved in this process that is specifically helping to address that and, and help local communities understand that um kind of undoing that is gonna help us deal with this issue over time. And so I just, I just wanted to bring that local kind of um perspective in because that was a lot of what we dealt with in the, the, you know, the city zoning commission is just having to work around these laws, the zoning rules that were, were enacted such a long time ago that had, you know, not a written purpose. Had, you know, not a written purpose of, you know, excluding people, but that's, that's what it ultimately did. And so I hope that we can bring that inclusive perspective to whatever we do as a, as a county to make sure that um that's part of the process.
Absolutely, Commissioner McLeod, I'm glad you brought it up, because it's definitely something that, once we're all pulled together and we're all sharing ideas and best practices. That we definitely need to recognize and highlight and also look at what, you know, might be great options to undo some of what you're discussing, so. Um, thanks for bringing that forward and and it sounds to me like we potentially needed an additional work session, but we will, we will. Uh, kind of move forward and have further discussion and and a TBD, so. With that, it is eleven after eleven, if there are no other miscellaneous. I don't see any other hands. Really, I'm really glad that every, that that the the commissioners that were here really participated. I. Again, I've been a little anxious about bringing all this forth, but I do know, I I feel like I. I kind of am listening to our board and I wanna be sure that that we're doing what um board members want us to do, so. With that, we are adjourned. Have a wonderful day, everyone enjoy your weekend and we will see you soon.